Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Woodya Regional Vocational Technical High School Committee Meeting for Wednesday, May 13th, 2020. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. This meeting will be conducted remotely via Zoom technology. For instructions to follow this meeting live, see the notice of the meeting posted on woodyatech.org. A call to order, and we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I got a big flag. I forgot to get a smaller. My Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag, to the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty. Thank you. Public comment. First, you have to read something. Comments can be emailed in advance of the 6:30 start time to lran@woodyatech@woodya.tech.us. All comments will be recorded. The record and all attempts will be made to mention them live during the meeting. Any emails received during the meeting before the public comment period ends will also be attempted to be mentioned. Additionally, public comment can be made via Zoom teleconference as instructed on the notice of the meeting. Just for the record, public comment is limited to a total of 20 minutes, and each person will have three minutes. Is there any public comment? In that case, what we will do is, I have a few letters here. They will be recorded into the minutes. Okay, none being heard. We'll move on for approval of minutes.
Move to accept.
Any discussion? Comments, questions?
There's some people still on mute.
Joanne, you gotta unmute yourself.
Joanna True, this woman Karen. Oh, there she is. Kara Cosmos.
Okay, I think I'm okay. How's that?
That's all right, Joanna.
I just, I had a question for Brett. Do we have two meetings that we have to approve minutes for, or just one? I thought it was, there were so many pages, excuse me, I'm sorry, but...
Right now, we're approving the minutes of the public hearing on the 2021 budget.
Thank you. Okay.
And we have a second. Are there any comments or questions? Okay, we have to do a roll call vote for this. Mr. Early. No, Mr. Wood. Ms. O'Connor. Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker. Mr. Irving. Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. LaSage.
Yes.
We need a motion for the April 8th, 2020 minutes of the regular school committee meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Roll call. Mr. Early. Mr. Wood. Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker. Mr. Irving. Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. LaSage.
Yes.
Okay, motion for the, we're looking for a motion for the Treasury report for April.
Move to accept.
Second.
Any discussions or questions? Roll call vote, Mr. Early, here, Mr. Wood, here, Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker. Mr. Irving. Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. LaSage.
Yes.
Moving on to old business. Got the school committee self-evaluation results. We only had eight submittals. We need a motion to approve this.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments?
Point information that really should receive from the files. No. I mean, is it even able to be approved? Have we just received this from the files?
Oh. Is the, the survey you just received?
Yeah, right. I mean, we're receiving it for the, for record in the files, not so much that we're approving it as, you know.
So you don't want to vote on it, or do you want to vote on it at the next meeting?
I would vote to receive from the files. Then it's a, it's a record of ours that we've made.
Okay.
It's not necessarily that we approve it.
Okay. So the vote is receiving the file on the, on the school committee self-evaluation.
Great. So we want to amend this to say we're voting to receive this, not approve it?
I amend my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Do a roll call vote again, Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood. Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker. Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Ms. LaSage.
Yes.
Unfortunately, we have no reports from our student representative. So we'll be moving on.
Could I say something, Mr. Mark?
Oh, sure.
Usually, this is where we, we acknowledge the hard work of our student representative, Catherine McNulty. I just, a few things about her. She, she has served very well in the school committee this year. She's done an amazing job. She has had an amazing career at Woodya Tech. She's a two-time state winner in wrestling, and she is choosing to go to Indiana Tech for biomedical engineering on a wrestling scholarship. So we're just very proud of her and her accomplishments, and I just didn't want the, this opportunity to go without mentioning those.
Well, we wish her a lot of luck in, in her future, yeah, education.
Be able to honor her at some point in the future.
Yeah. We'll have, we'll have her come back for sure.
That would be... We haven't done anything yet for next year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And we won't be doing that until fall.
Probably not, yes.
Okay.
You want to start with your report, Maureen?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. At this time, I do not have any personnel action. We'll put that on hold at least until the next month or so, until we have a better understanding about what next year might look like. Budget update, at this time, there is not much new information on the budget from the legislature. It seems to be clear that we'll be starting a new fiscal year with a 112 budget that will set, will be set by the Commissioner of Education because of our inability to have local town meetings. At this point, we would only have seven to eight town meetings completed and have our budget ready to go for next year. Most, if not all, regional schools are in this position, are requesting, I will be requesting executive subcommittee meeting next week or the following week because we do need to discuss some budget implications of what's going on right now. MCAS update, on Tuesday, May 12th, 14 students took the AP calculus online exam, and that's a first time for the College Board. And as of right now, the Department of Secondary and Elementary Education has said MCAS for the class of 2022 will not take place until the fall. We are currently in our eighth week of remote learning. As you know, the school district will not open up for the rest of the year. We're anxiously looking forward to the governor's announcement on Monday about going into Phase One and what that will look like for the summer. At this time, we did cancel the discovery program, but we're now waiting for further guidance on being able to open for summer enrichment programs. As far as our evening programs, we started, we have started electrical and plumbing remotely as of this past Monday. All students start their classes on a Google Meet, and then they complete their work on their own. Plumbing will be done at the end of the, next week, and electrical will be done at the end of June. We did have to refund the personal enrichment courses, but most of the people that took those courses said they will definitely be back when we can have those courses. There's much discussion at the state level about how we can open up our schools safely in the fall. I can tell you right now, we're in the process of setting up two health rooms, one room for students that are not feeling well, and another room for students that may need medication, Band-Aids, et cetera. There are many other ideas that we're working through, but we're also, also looking forward to guidance from the state. We continue to work on end-of-the-year activities and how we can best honor our students. I'm so appreciative of our staff and students for being flexible and doing, and doing the best we possibly can for our students during this time. On that note, I know many of our seniors are upset about the ending of the school year and the canceling of senior activities. Please know that we are so proud of the class of 2020 and their accomplishments. What they have had to endure is not fair. We've made the best decisions we can for them at this time. We know that they would like and deserve more. The Woodya Tech admin and faculty will not stop working for them, but the safety of all has to continue to be our priority. And that is my report for today.
Thank you.
Any questions for Maureen?
It says on the agenda, there's two votes.
Yes.
Student Opportunity Act. Are you, am I ready to move forward with that?
Yep, go ahead, please.
So the Student Opportunity Act is in your packet. This was legislation that passed last year, and we needed to write a plan about how we would use those funds moving forward. I, to be honest, I'm not sure if those funds will be available, but we do have to submit a plan to the state regarding how we would use those funds and what our priorities would be, and that is in your packet. I do need a vote at this school committee approval.
Move to accept.
Second.
Any questions or comments on this?
Maureen, just a quick comment. Strategic plan, a lot of this came through that, I believe, as far as goals we set for the last, next few years.
Right. We try to have the strategic plan drive all of our work.
Okay.
Joanna?
I just had a question. What does ELA mean SGP? It was in the, it was under commitment number two, no, wait, three. Under commitment number three, monitoring success with outcome metrics and targets. I just didn't understand what S, I, I don't know, I tried to look for it in there, S, it says, it's the last thing listed on a check mark, it says ELA, English language?
Learners.
But that's ELL, so I didn't know what that meant.
That is English, meaning SGP. So there's their student growth score.
Student growth.
From their English. And their English, ELA is English.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, right, that's going to be a measure, a metric. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to take a roll call vote for the Student Opportunity Act, which we will forget. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood. Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker, no, Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. LaSage.
Yes.
All right, moving on. Now we need a vote for, to not approve school choice.
Right. This is an annual vote that needs to happen. At this time, we are full within district students, so we will not be taking any out of district students. The only exception I would like to ask is if a student transfers that has been accepted to Woodya and has started at Woodya would be going into their sophomore, 11th or 12th grade, that they would be able to continue at Woodya under choice provision.
Move to accept.
So just so we're clear, a no vote, votes against school choice?
Right.
And a yes vote, votes in favor of it?
Right.
Okay.
Correct. Move to accept, no.
Second, no. There you go.
Okay. Mr. Early.
No.
Mr. Wood. Ms. O'Connor.
No.
Mr. LaBella.
No.
Mr. Tucker. Mr. Irving.
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde.
No.
Mr. O'Connor.
No.
Mr. James.
No.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
No.
This is true.
No.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
No.
Mr. LaSage.
No.
Moving on. Principals' report. Mr. Laganas.
Yeah, I have here tonight, if you, in the packet, the, the approval of the 2020-2021 calendar, and it's a draft. And just want to say good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and rest of the school committee members. If you'd like to look at it in the dates and some of the, some of the areas that are there that were, I don't know if they're highlighted there, but if there are any questions, I'm here to answer, and Ms. Lynch, myself, can answer them for next year's calendar.
I just have a question in regard to, obviously, this is a very draft tentative calendar. I, if we can accept this, will we be reviewing it again maybe in August before we would are, maybe we even need a July meeting this year, we'll talk about that, I guess, later, but to approve it tentatively regarding the fact that it will need to be reviewed before school opens, is that a reasonable way to discuss it?
I, I think, based on the information I'm hearing, we're going to have to be flexible with everything for next year. So if we can approve this as, you know, best hopes moving forward, and then I do think we probably will be revisiting many things in July and August as we get ready for the school year.
That sounds reasonable.
That does.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're approving this as a draft, and then if it changes at a later date, I guess you'll, you'll come back to us, is that right?
I'd approve the calendar, and then I'll come back to you with any changes that we have to put in there over the school year. Yes.
Do you have a question?
Is there a motion on the floor?
I was, I was going to say I make a motion to accept the draft 2021 school calendar.
I'll second it.
Okay. Are there any more questions or comments? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote for the school calendar draft. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood. Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker. Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
And Mr. LaSage.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Business manager, managers' report. Kara Cosmos.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Superintendent Lynch. I have a few things to report to you, all very good, positive things. First of all, in your packet, you have the annual audit reports. That was what made the packet so very long, because this year you have them electronically. Usually, you get them in binders. And obviously, due to current circumstances, we had to do it this year. So what the auditors did was they also provided a cover sheet with some additional information, and I'm just going to summarize a couple of the key points for you. First of all, the opinion on the financial statements is an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, and it's the best that you can have. They reported that all of the reporting deadlines were met, the information they received was accurate, and that no material weaknesses were found. The management letter addresses some of the suggestions that they have for us as to how we can improve things from year to year. There were two comments from the past year, and one of them, both of them have been resolved. The first one was they had requested that we update our procedure manual for internal controls for federal grants, and they found that the district satisfactorily addressed this compliance recommendation. The second comment from last year was that they referenced some suggestions for us managing the student activity fund, and they also reported that the district has satisfactorily addressed that compliance recommendation. They only had one comment for this year, and one of, it was that they suggested that the district implement a comprehensive risk management process to help mitigate the risk associated with cybersecurity. This was something that I was investigating prior to the closing of the school in March. Obviously, school's not in session, we can't test it within the walls of the school, so that has been put on hold, and I will get back to that process as soon as it makes sense for us to have some sort of study done. So that is the report in a nutshell. I will answer any questions if you have them, if I can. Otherwise, I would ask you to accept the reports.
So moved. Second.
Okay, roll call vote to accept the audit report. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood. Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker. Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. LaSage.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much. I have a few updates that I'd like to provide. First of all, from the Woodya Tech Educational Foundation, I wanted to let the committee know that the foundation recently voted to award $500 scholarship to a senior plumbing student in memory of David Docky. He is the student who recently passed away. He was a senior plumbing student, and the foundation will be awarding a student a $500 scholarship. The Woodya Tech Foundation has also received over $1,500 in donations in memory of Superintendent Lynch's father. The Lynch family has requested that this money be designated for scholarships, so the foundation will award three Jack Lynch Memorial Scholarships to graduates as follows. $500 to a future teacher, $500 to a most improved student, and $500 to a student for their trade person's tools. Also, one thing to update you on is the foundation is sponsoring a charity fundraiser in which Principal Leganis has agreed to cut his hair and turn it into a... ...style mullet. Today, staff members have pledged over $1,200, and this money...
Sign me up.
I'll tell you how in a minute. This, this will be used to offset student, either student lunch balances and/or other student needs to help those families who are experiencing financial difficulties right now. The details will follow on when and how this event will be happening, but we want to thank you, Principal Leganis, for being such a good sport. If you want to sign up, you can go onto the website under the foundation, and there's a place where you technically make a donation in the memorandum section, and you can put in the memorandum section the Leganis mullet or the principal haircut or something like that. So that's going to be happening pretty soon. And speaking of student lunch balances, at the suggestion of the superintendent, we reached out to staff as well as parents whose children had funds remaining to pay in their lunch accounts, well, I'm sorry, left over in their lunch account, and asked if they aren't willing to donate some or all of this remaining balance to help offset the accounts of those students and who, and their families who are struggling to pay. To date, we have received over $1,100 from staff members and over $1,500 from families, and on behalf of the members of the foundation, I would like to say thank you to everyone for their generosity during these unprecedented times. That will go a long way to help our kids. And one final thing, speaking of generosity, I would like to thank, on behalf of the students, the senior class, and the staff of Woodya Tech, thank Mr. Early for his ice cream donation. In appreciation of all the Woodya staff, and in honor of the senior class, Mr. Early has donated one free ice cream cone or slush from Bigots Ice Cream here in Haverhill to every staff member and every member of the senior class. So thank you again, Mr. Early.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Early.
That's great.
And that's all I have for you.
Thank you. Mr. LaBella, do you have a question?
Yeah. In regard to the supplies that are in the budget that aren't being consumed or used, are we keeping in account of that?
Yes, typically, I would be coming to you now with a transfer for some of the things that we would need to get us through the end of the year and to perhaps open up the next year. Because we are under such uncertainty, we do have several accounts where the balances will not be used, and I've been working with the superintendent. We really don't know where we're going to be financially, so we're kind of leaving all the money in a balance until we have a better sense, and then we, we will come back to you in probably July or August with a transfer and a plan of how we're going to use some of that money.
Good. Thank you.
Kara, I have another question.
Sure.
Are we going to continue to feed the kids this summer that we've been feeding?
I, I don't know that we've had that discussion. I, I, I don't know.
Okay. Okay.
Kara, I had a question.
Sure.
Regarding the families with a balance, lunch balance left over.
Yes.
Is there a way they could find how to donate that if they have not heard about it?
We sent emails to every family. We have the ability through our food service software to send letters to people, to send emails. So we ran a report of every, every parent or every student who had money left over, and we sent it out to families and asked if they would do that. We did not, I don't know that we did it to the senior class. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, because I know my daughter has a balance, I would be more than happy to donate.
Okay, I will, I will make record of that. Thank you very much.
Anything else? Thank you, Kara.
Thank you.
Moving on. Committee chair first. Ms. LaBella, go ahead.
It's a quick one. What, what have we done on the status of, you know, all these outside projects that were in progress, and then they came to a halt?
They are at a halt.
They're at a halt.
Yeah. There's a stay-at-home order. I can't have kids working. Co-op program has been canceled.
Somebody had an automobile, an automobile shop that was being worked on. Is that just left, or they couldn't pick it up?
The day, the day after we closed, I know the auto body teachers, auto tech teachers went in and repaired the cars that they could, and cars have all been picked up. I have not heard of anyone with any issues. And cars have all been picked up. I have not heard of anyone with any issues like that.
Great, thank you.
I have a question as well in regard to concerns over the ending of the year. How did we do with the daycare? Did that close as well?
That is closed. Yeah.
Are they planning on coming back next year as well?
I believe so. We have a contract with them, so I do believe that they are planning on coming back. Many daycares in our area have been closed. We will know more information starting on Monday.
Oh, that's true. Thank you.
I had a quick question on the lunch. Do you know approximately what is outstanding as far as, you know, the outstanding deficit?
I do, I'm sorry, I regret. I don't have that information right now. What we have been doing is we've been keeping track. When we reached out to people who had balances due, we also encouraged them that if they were having difficulty paying their bill or needed to arrange payment plans for them to get in touch with us. So we are keeping a log of those people, and those obviously are the ones whose balances we will address first.
That was reasonable.
Anything else?
We can make sure that we bring that to you at the next school committee meeting.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure, you know, if it's, if we're close, you know, what can we do to try to pay it all off? That was kind of my thought, so.
Okay. I just think we need to also just recognize what a great job everybody's doing under such difficult circumstances with so many unknowns. And we have so many things that are generally just a routine. It just happens next year, and everything has to be redone. And you guys are really pitching in and doing what needs to, and it needs to be recognized. Thank you.
I agree with you, Joanne. I agree with you.
We truly have a wonderful staff that really have the focus about the kids and always trying to do what's best for kids. So we're just very lucky at Whittier.
Can I also mention something? That the audit, once again, went really, really well, and I'm so impressed. And it's just a really great thing that we do this every year. It's wonderful for the, you know, important for the public to have that transparency, but it's also great for us to see how well the administration is keeping up with things. And it was great. Everything was taken care of. And the cybersecurity thing, we'll deal with that when we can, but I was just really pleased. It was a long report. I went through most of it. I didn't get through to the end, but I was just really pleased to see how hard you guys worked. And I know it must have been difficult, you know, to provide all that, but it was just great. It was really a good thorough report. Every year it's thorough, and I really appreciate that level of meticulous detail. It's great.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the June, the annual agenda items, policy updates. What policy updates? And we'll have the superintendent's evaluation. Do we have that? Did we get that? That's all?
Somebody, did you get it, Lisa?
Did you do it on Google Classroom?
Yeah.
I haven't looked there yet, but, okay, that's where it is for you guys to fill out, so.
Okay.
Do you want it back for next meeting?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. So I looked it over, and I could only see the evaluation sheet with three checklist, you know, three checklists in it. I didn't see the usual thing where it's like a guide that describes everything that Maureen's done. So I couldn't find that. I could only find the checklist part.
So in your packet is my, my written update on my goals and where I am on the standards.
Okay, I'll look again. Yes.
That is in the packet.
Okay, I'll look again. I must have just, maybe is it at the end on page?
It's a long packet.
165 or something? Okay, thank you. That's why I missed it. I never got that far.
Yeah, it's like in the 130s.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
So, Maureen, are we trying to get this all in for the results for next month's meeting?
That would be great. Yeah, so we can start the new fiscal year.
So if we have them in June 1st, is that?
That gives us plenty of time.
Plenty of time, okay.
That would be great.
So if you can submit those by June 1st electronically to Lisa, that'd be great.
Okay.
Subcommittee reports. Executive, we have not met, and I do not know if there's the need for a meeting?
There is definitely a need for a meeting.
Okay. You have a date in mind?
You know what? I didn't, but let me take a look. How about next Wednesday, the 20th? Would that work for everyone?
Yeah. What time?
Going very far.
No.
6:30 again? Does that work? May 20th, 6:30, executive subcommittee? Okay, yep. All right, we'll send out a meeting notice.
Instructional personnel, Dr. Testaverde?
We obviously haven't met, certainly not planning on anything. I think we'll be looking at more discussion of where we're headed, probably in a summer meeting to do something in the fall as usual.
Okay. Plan ops. Mr. Tucker is not here. Is there any reason for any type of meeting with plan ops?
We're not in the building right now, so. I can give you a little update that I can tell you that the maintenance department is in the building. They are already starting to work through some of their summer projects, getting things ready and getting a kind of a jump start on things. They've been on a, they've been on a shift kind of a program, so they're not all in the building at the same time. But, you know, the building looks great. Our maintenance staff is doing a phenomenal job making sure that it's a clean building. Many of us go into the building, they immediately after we leave disinfect where we've been at. So, you know, I feel very lucky that we've been in a very clean and safe building right now.
It's good to hear. Mr. LaBella?
Is the track still on schedule for next month?
It is.
Thank you.
I have a question in regard to our status with the state for building improvements. Any word on that? Obviously, they're not working very much either, but any, is everything on hold? Where are we?
Nothing's on hold just yet. We're still in the eligibility stage. Kara and I will be working the next couple of months to start really working on the process that really begins July 1st. But we'll set up the building committee and things like that that need to get set up. So, yes, we still have that in the back burner. It's going to be moving to the front burner.
Maureen, do you people have to select like a project manager for the feasibility study? How does that work?
We're not in the feasibility study yet. We're just in the eligibility stage. So really, we're just setting up a committee, doing some of that background work so that we can go back to MASC and ask to go into the eligibility stage.
Okay.
It's a couple-year process.
We'll move on. Salary negotiations. Mr. Early?
At this time, I don't believe anything is needed.
Not at this time.
Okay. Policy. Mr. Irving?
We received quite a few new policies from MASC, and so we reviewed that on the, our past meeting on the 30th of April. And the minutes are before you, and I moved those for approval and asked you to kind of keep them in front of you because each one of the new policies has what we did as far as the committee, the subcommittee working on them along with Lisa and the superintendent. So, you know, I moved that for approval or for acceptance for the files.
Move to accept.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Tucker? Mr. Irving?
Aye.
Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. LaSage?
Yes.
Again, I recommend if you could keep that sheet in front of you, it will help explain some of the policies going forward. This begins with B E D H and ends with J J H dash R. And as you can see, there's a multitude of changes. What we did, some we already had reviewed earlier, and then we set it out again, so they're already part of our policy. Some had minor changes such as a word here or there or a sentence. Others had, were brand new to Whittier, and we adopted them. And we thank the superintendent, Lisa Rand, for all the work they did in putting this together, both the recommended and what we had as a policy. And what we're voting on now is a first reading for the new policy going into our handbook. And the second reading will be in June, pending approval of this evening. I would move these motions as a slate. If any questions, maybe the superintendent or one of the committee members can, subcommittee members can help.
Any questions from anybody?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, no questions or comments. We'll do a roll call vote on this. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker? Mr. Irving?
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. LaSage?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a quick question for the superintendent. We had, we had a couple that were going out as far as legal review. Could the subcommittee have either a brief meeting with you or some way communicate what the answers were, the questions we had asked for?
Absolutely. I did mail it off to the attorneys. I have not heard back from them. As soon as I hear back from them, I will let the committee know, and we can set something up.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Meeting dates. The next regular school committee meeting will be June 10th at 6:30. And we have an executive on May 20th at 6:30. Is that correct, Maureen?
No executive session.
No, no, no. An executive-
Committee.
Committee meeting.
Yep, next week, yes. Sorry about that.
There is no new business posted?
Move to adjourn.
There is no executive session? Okay.
What's that, Lisa?
All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
You got to do a roll call vote.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker? Mr. Irving?
Aye.
Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. LaSage?
Yes.
Okay, the meeting's adjourned, and we'll see everybody next month.